I'd like to call this meeting and the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin tonight with our invocation with Tina Freestone. If you would like to come up, and this is not your first rodeo, so please proceed. Oh, go ahead and turn up, yeah, there.
I'm Tina Freestone, and I am responsible in our community for our young women with our church from the ages of 12 to 18, and I belong to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we bow our heads humbly before Thee at this time and express our love and our gratitude to Thee for the many blessings that Thou hast bestowed upon us. We're grateful, Heavenly Father, for the gift of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. We are grateful for His infinite atonement and know that all things are possible through Him. We pray, Heavenly Father, for our free country and for those who have sacrificed so much for us to be able to live in this free land and to worship Thee freely. We ask for a special blessing at this time for our county commissioner and the members of the commission. We ask for Thy choice's blessings to be poured upon them, for them to be guided by Thy Spirit, that they would know the work that Thou would have them do, as well as how they can lead and guide this great community. We also ask for a special blessing to be upon our community members, especially those who are in our presence tonight, that Thou would bless them with the righteous desires of their hearts and all that they stand in need of. Again, Father, we give thanks to Thee for all that we have been blessed with in the sacred name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda. Commissioner Johnson.
We've approved tonight's agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are ceremonial matters. We have Resolution 2025.176. Administrator, if you'd like to introduce it, then I will recognize Commissioner Withington.
Um, yes, you have me for you. An honorary resolution recognizing the service of African-American soldiers on D-Day. And Commissioner Withington has brought this forward, so I'll turn it over to him.
Commissioner, you're recognized.
Okay, so the proclamation says, "Whereas on June 6, 1944, Allied forces launched the historic D-Day invasion on the beaches of Normandy, France, marking a pivotal turning point in World War II and the eventual defeat of Nazi tyranny. And whereas among the more than 150,000 Allied troops who stormed the beaches that day were brave African-American soldiers who served with distinction, courage, and honor, despite facing segregation, discrimination, and limited recognition within the U.S. Armed Forces. And whereas among these heroes were members of the 320th Barrage Balloon Battalion, the 385th Quartermaster Truck Company, the 490th Port Battalion, and its 226th and 229th Port Companies, and many others, who braved the perils of war, including hand-to-hand combat, and operated the vital Red Ball Express and around-the-clock truck convoy operation that enabled the supply and advancement of Allied forces towards Paris. And whereas these soldiers not only fought for freedom abroad, but also laid the groundwork for the civil rights movement here at home, challenging the hypocrisy of fighting for democracy overseas while being denied basic rights here in their own country. And whereas General Dwight D. Eisenhower, Supreme Allied Commander of the Allied Expeditionary Force, publicly acknowledged their valor and effectiveness of African-American troops, specifically recognizing 320th Barrage Balloon Battalion for their distinguished performance on D-Day, marking a historic milestone for the segregated U.S. Army. Whereas five distinguished African-American sons of Clay County, Missouri, Private First Class Luther Douglas, Private First Class Howell Gunner Houston, Private First Class George R. Jones, Private First Class Lawrence W. Smith, and Private First Class Ira Hunter, served honorably and historically during the D-Day operations and were later awarded numerous military honors for their selfless service. And now therefore be it resolved by the Clay County, Missouri Board of Commissioners that we solemnly honor and commemorate the valor, sacrifice, patriotism of the following African-American World War II veterans on D-Day: Private First Class Luther Douglas, ship carpenter, awards: European African Middle Eastern theater ribbon, one Bronze Star, victory ribbon, good conduct medal, and four overseas bars. Private First Class Howell Gunner Houston, longshoreman, 821st Amphibian Truck Company, awards: European African Middle Eastern theater ribbon, three Bronze Stars, victory ribbon, good conduct medal, three overseas bars, and a service lapel button. Private First Class George R. Jones, truck driver, 323rd Port Company and 513th Parachute Infantry Regiment, awards: European African Middle Eastern theater ribbon, one Bronze Star, victory ribbon, good conduct medal, three overseas bars, and a service lapel button. Private First Class Lawrence W. Smith, supply clerk, technician, fifth class, awards: European African Middle Eastern theater ribbon, two Bronze Stars, victory ribbon, good conduct medal, five overseas bars, and a service lapel button. Private First Class Ira Jones, quartermaster, company 30217, awards: five Bronze Stars, one for each campaign, Northern France, Rhineland, Central Europe, Battle of the Bulge, D-Day, and a good conduct medal. Be it further resolved that their legacies endure in the history of our county and nation's history as beacons of courage, perseverance, and honor, and that the Clay County Commission extends its deepest gratitude and its highest recognition to the veterans and their families for their service and sacrifice in defense of liberty and justice. Joining us, we have several family members here from the families of these five individuals, and I think this is long overdue. The African-American soldiers on D-Day in World War II, you know, they have been forgotten, so... I'm sorry. So I'm just glad that this commission can finally recognize your guys as family. So thank you guys for being here.
Thank you for doing this.
Would anyone else care to comment? Any other commissioners wish to comment? Then I'd like to recognize the families, if anyone would like to come forward. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just want to extend the same gratitude to all the families, all those who served, you know, served at a time in which their country didn't always love them back the way that they loved their country. And I would make the case that D-Day was the most important, most consequential day in the history of the country. And I think there's even a case to be made that it was the most consequential day in the history of humanity. And so those who served that day, many of whom gave their lives in that service, deserve recognition throughout the rest of history. And I appreciate Commissioner Withington for doing a small part of that today.
Any other commissioners wish to comment? Would anyone from the audience care to comment? Would make any comments on any of the, either the event or any of the individuals who were highlighted?
Yes, Commissioner Withington. My name is A.J. Byrd. I live at 431 East Franklin Street, Liberty, Missouri. And I truly appreciate, not only your doing this work and digging in deep, but the sense of emotion that you have around this truly exhibits what it's about. It's about freedom, and it is very important that we, that folks who have went through issues be recognized. And my father was, served in the, in the World War II, and many of my relatives, Luther Douglas, a cousin, and Howell Houston, a cousin, an uncle, and other very close friends, all these men I knew, each and every one of them. And the kind of character that they demonstrated throughout the remainder of their lives was truly powerful. They were true leaders in the community, and part of that is a result of that experience. One of my uncles who returned from the war, they didn't talk, a lot of them wouldn't talk much about it. George Jones, whose name was called, wouldn't talk. I talked to his son, and he said he had not expressed a word about it. He refused to talk about it. But Howell Gunner Houston did talk about it, about how he experienced extreme frostbite during the Battle of the Bulge and was there during that time, and he was driving a gasoline truck during the war. Think how dangerous that was. And not only that, his twin brother also was driving a gasoline truck. But the Lord seen it in their fortune that they successfully returned home and lived contributing lives and raised families, and they have many relatives who continue to love and appreciate what they have done. So thank you again for your leadership on this, Mr. Withington.
Thank you.
If anyone else would care to come forward, please do so. You can take your time. Be patient.
Trust me, I'm not going to talk like I do on the phone. My name is Loretta Strawn, and I'm almost as old as Albert. So I remember all those people too, along with my dad. My dad was Howell Houston. And he talked about how they were all so young, and they didn't even consider whether they were frightened or not. It was just that we want to live. And he talked about it occasionally, but I personally came up here to thank Commissioner Withington and also Dr. Robinson. I appreciate that, and to be recognized is quite an honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commission. Thank you so very much for this opportunity, and thank you for taking the time to recognize these veterans. I would like to say that in 2003, all of the living veterans of World War II were interviewed. I interviewed them, and they were all alive in 2003. I interviewed them, and they were all alive in 2003. And we had a program at First Baptist Church in their honor. It was such, it was such an honor to meet all of these men. And at that time, you could go downstairs to the recorder of D-Day's office, and you could get all of their information. That's how I was able to get the information that you read. And today, that is no longer open to the public because it's all private. And so we're so happy that we were able to get that information and be able to share it. And I'd just like to say, if you have not had an opportunity to come up to Garrison School Cultural Center Museum, we have a room dedicated to the veterans. And if you would come up there and take a look, you will be able to see all of these pictures of all of these men and everything that you're hearing today. And the first African-American veteran to die in World War II was Corporal George Reedlove from, I'm sorry, from Excelsior Springs. And so all of this information is in the room. So I would invite you to come up. We are open on Saturday, which is tomorrow and Saturday morning, for tours of Garrison School. So you're welcome to come by, and thank you so much.
Oh, by the way, I want to say thank you because you've served this county and this community so well in your preservation of our history. Obviously, that was one of the reasons why you were an important part of the bicentennial commission here in Clay County. And it's always been a pleasure to talk with you about the history of Clay County. And thank you for keeping that alive and keeping it in our consciousness. So we appreciate your hard work for so long to make sure that we don't forget.
And thank you again for your work.
They didn't say the best till last. It just happened that way, okay? My name is Shelton Ponder. And as a veteran, but also as an individual who was a kid here and knew all of these gentlemen, I enjoyed sharing with them. I mean, I'm a little bit older than a lot of people in here. And just to be recognized, that is a great thing. Having read history, lived history, been a part of Vietnam era, and just to see how things unfold. It may take a while for things to happen, but no better time than the present. People talk about yesterday and tomorrow's, the present, because we'll never be here all together like this again, believe it or not. For those men to do what they did, but let me just add something. Those men came from something. Most people say, you know, people come from nothing. No, those men came from something, someone. Someone loved them, someone cherished them, someone worried about them, the whole thing just as any other human being. And to go overseas in that climate, because as young men, they do things and sometimes without full knowledge of what is actually happening, but they take it on. Because once you raise your hand, that's the most solemn commitment you'll ever make. And to go into a battle where you know what's happening back with the folks at home, they're worried about you, et cetera, and you go and you do your best. It is instilled in individuals, be a credit to your race. I will speak of the human race, because at one time, it was just the way that people of color addressed one another, be a credit to your race. These men and many others, there are many heroes walking among us every day. They're dying, they're older, et cetera. And they came back, they had families, they went to work. Luther Douglas was one of the richest men in Liberty. He hired people, he had property. The whole thing was, I call him Mr. Guns. But the conversations I had with him, I had with Mr. George Jones, you know, these were men just walking among us, and we read about World War II. I could stand here for another year, but I'm not going to spend that much time. I have become aware at one time through looking at documentaries, that if you began watching World War II as a kid, you would never see the end of it on film. There's that much of it. Now, when you consider how much has been donated to different individuals, et cetera, and then you look at the involvement of people marginalized, but it took everybody to maintain, to go to war, to stay at war, to stay committed, to make sacrifices, and then to come home. Those men, all the ones who came back, were blessed. The ones who perished there were blessed, because nobody knows God's plan. We just live according to the way we think He wants us to live. It's really an honor. This is amazing, and thank you so for just digging in. And I understand how you feel, because they would probably stand here right now and just like, it was just something that we had to do. That's what they would probably say. I spoke with Mr. George Jones, and I'll finish in a minute. I spoke with Mr. George Jones once, and I asked him about it, and he just virtually shut me down. And he said, I'd rather have been anywhere than there. I spoke with Mr. Lawrence Sonny Smith, and his attitude was different. But that's the way people felt, to come back and to face what they had to face, et cetera. But the thing is, this will be in the history forever here in Clay County. And I salute every one of them, and I salute you for taking it on and doing what you have done as a group. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just kind of volunteered amongst my family to come speak, so thanks a lot, y'all. I do want to say thank you so much to Jason and to Dr. Cecilia Robinson in the back there for just bringing us all together to acknowledge these wonderful men who went and served our country. Before I continue, I do want to say thank you to everyone in the room who has a serviceman or a servicewoman that fights for our country. It is something you could never pay me to do. It is something I would never, ever want to do. So if you have someone that does serve our country, thank you, thank you, and thank you again. It is a true blessing to be able to stand here in front of you all, to be the granddaughter of Lawrence W. Smith. My grandpa was an absolutely beautiful person, and to be able to hear and learn about the history that sometimes we feel can be swept under the rug, it is very beautiful, once time progresses, to be able to learn about not only the everyday people in your backyard that you pass along the square, that you might have gone to school with or just knew from just passing by, but to hear that they were ones that went off and fought to make a difference, not only for your community, but for, you know, the country. It is just such a noble act to have the courage to go and fight for a country that treats you like a second-class citizen. And to be of a younger generation and to hear that when they went and fought off in war in a country that they didn't know anything about, to then come back and be told that they had to sit in the back of the bus, or to enter through a different entryway, or to have different use of different facilities, it's just very, very mind-boggling and something that I hope that is something that is truly that is never repeated again. So if I can just ask anything, just please continue to share representation amongst people groups. Representation is very important. I just feel that if we don't give people their flowers now, then we will continue to repeat the things that we so often try to steer away from. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Very well, we will stand at ease for a few moments, and we will present the certificate. I don't know if there's a specific, whether it's yourself or whoever, but...
I have five, one for each family.
Okay, well, that's a, well planned.
Yeah.
Well planned. So how do we want to...
Well, it's certainly up to the commission if you want to do it individually with a family and a picture, but we'd also like to take pictures, or if you'd like to have them all as a group, it's certainly up to you.
It's whatever they want to do.
Okay, so...
Yeah, if you guys want to come up and have a picture of all of us?
Yeah. We're ready. Yeah. Yeah. I'm ready. I don't know. There's a... Jason, please stand in the back so they can get a picture of all of you.
Who's all squeezing? Yeah. She's... All right, you all ready?
Okay. for the ceremony. Appreciate that. That brings us to public comments. Are there any members of the public who'd like to address the commission on any subjects? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are four items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is approval of the commission meeting minutes from May 29. And Resolution 2025-177 is approving invoice payments to the Clay County for May 24 through May 30. There are 215 invoices totaling $2,169,571.13. Resolution 2025-180 is approving IFB 69-25 and Capital Project Incumbrance Request for the purchase of a rental pontoon boat and maintenance service from KC Boat Dr. LLC. And Resolution 2025-182 is appointing members to the Airport Advisory Commission.
Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Discussion, seeing none? I'm sorry, did you have anything? Okay. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I might have missed that.
No, no, actually, I really don't. I just, I noted that we had one of our appointees here. I didn't know if we wanted to give him a chance to speak or not, but I'm good either way. I have nothing to say.
Okay. I mean, we could, I hesitated too, just because it means taking it off, but if the gentleman would like to address the commission, he's more than welcome.
Not affected, yes, I...
Okay. No, no, I appreciate the consideration being shown. He seems to be declining.
Pass, thank you very much.
Good call. Good call. Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. So if there's no further discussion, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
We have two items this evening on our regular agenda. We have, first up is 2025-178. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-178 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from May 24 through May 30. There is one invoice totaling $218.32.
Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2025-178.
Motion has been, excuse me, motion has been made for the passage of 2025-178. Discussion, seeing none? You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Next on our agenda is 2025-179. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-179 is approving change order number one for Clay County Road and Bridge Project Number 25-1RB108 to increase partial depth patching of the northeast 140th Street Bridge Deck Repair with Decker Construction. And Director Degenhart is here to provide information to the commission.
Good evening. Please proceed.
Thank you. Tom Degenhart, Road and Bridge Director. This resolution for change order number one is for the deck repairs on northeast 140th Street Bridge over Clear Creek. This contract was awarded to Decker Construction Services on April 24 by Resolution 2025-141. This is a line item bid contract, and the line item for Portland Cement Concrete Patching needs to be increased from 525 square feet to 1,725 square feet. The original quantity was based on a March 2024 deck evaluation. Since then, the bridge has gone through an additional freeze thaw cycle during the winter 2024-2025, causing additional concrete deck delamination. Since there is a substantial increase in quantity, we were able to negotiate the unit price, and it dropped from 5120 to 3080 per square foot. And the net change for this item and the overall contract is an additional $26,250. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion? Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2025-179.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2025-179. Any further discussion? Seeing none? You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes, six zero.
That concludes our regular agenda. Next, we have reports, and we have two reports. Administrator?
Yes, there are two reports included in the agenda packet this evening. The first is the Excelsior Springs Road District Number 10 Annual Report from October 1, 2023, to September 30, 2024, and also the Auditor's Cash-Based Monthly Report for May of 2025.
Very well. With that, we will go to county administrator comments. Administrator?
Just that the commission's next meeting is next Thursday, the 12th, at 6:00 here in the chambers.
Thank you. That brings us to commissioner comments. We will start with Commissioner Carpenter, if he doesn't mind. Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wagner? Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
There you go.
I just want to say that I couldn't be prouder of anybody than Jason this evening. I think that was a wonderful, wonderful thing that you did. You can tell how much it meant to those people. We know the struggles that they endured when they came back from the war, and they were an integral part of our victory in Europe and in all of our theaters. But that was such a selfless, good thing that you did, and it's so gratifying to see us do something so wonderful as we did this evening. Make you feel good about having the job, because there's so many times I leave here and I feel like heck. But tonight, I feel 10 feet off the ground, so thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Commissioner Whittington? Okay, I will, I will make a couple of comments, one being that obviously we are approaching the, you know, D-Day anniversary. And so that is obviously something we need to commemorate, and of course, with Commissioner Whittington's acknowledgement of...
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That concludes our regular agenda. Next, we have reports, and we have two reports. Administrator?
Yes, there are two reports included in the agenda packet this evening. The first is the Excelsior Springs Road District Number 10 Annual Report from October 1st, 2023, to September 30th, 2024, and also the Auditor's Cash Basis Monthly Report for May of 2025.
Very well. With that, we will go to county administrator comments. Administrator?
Just that the commission's next meeting is next Thursday, the 12th, at 6:00. You're in the chambers.
Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner comments. We will start with Commissioner Carpenter, if he doesn't mind. Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wagner?
Commissioner Lawson? Yes.
There you go.
I just want to say that I couldn't be prouder of anybody than Jason this evening. I think that was a wonderful, wonderful thing that you did. You can tell how much it meant to those people. We know the struggles that they endured when they came back from the war, and they were an integral part of our victory in Europe, and in all of our theaters. But that was such a selfless, good thing that you did, and it's so gratifying to see us do something so wonderful as we did this evening. Makes you feel good about having the job, because there's so many times I leave here, and I feel like heck. But tonight, I feel 10 feet off the ground, so thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Commissioner Whittington? Okay, I will, I will make a couple of comments, one being that obviously we are approaching the, you know, D-Day anniversary. And so, that is obviously something we need to commemorate, and of course, with Commissioner Whittington's acknowledgement of that this evening, that puts it front and center of minds. I would like to mention first off that we do need to consider all veterans as we go forward, because everybody who served this country deserves our gratitude, our thanks, especially those who either unfortunately ended up giving their lives, or certainly suffered physical and emotional issues. The reason that is kind of top of mind is, last Friday, over at the Justice Center, there was a ceremony called the Veterans Court, and we had our graduating class. These are individuals who are obviously by the name veterans, and they have unfortunately had problems with the law. They have, I think, by and large, due in no small part to the service they rendered to this country. They came back emotionally compromised, and that led them to a very dark place in their lives. The individuals who go through this, I think, demonstrate a lot of courage to take and return themselves to a brighter place. I'm very proud that the county has this kind of an institution going, where we can reach out to those who basically volunteered to sacrifice their lives for our sakes and for our freedoms. We owe them a second, third, and fourth chance. And the program is remarkably successful in that the recidivism rate gets to be very low. And as I was listening to the proceedings, I, I, actually, I'd asked earlier in the day, one of the people who was sitting in the group I was with, I said, "Where do people find the grit and the determination to be able to take this very difficult program?" And it takes, it's not a 24-hour thing. This is a very long, grueling process, and they have to really work it. And I had, no sooner had those words escaped my lips than I thought, "We know where they get the grit, we know where they get the determination. These are U.S. service personnel. These are people who have that grit before. All that we have done is given them the opportunity to, once again, prove their worth. And if we can bring them back into productive lives where they feel the pride of what they had once, it is tremendously worth it." And I would recommend to any commissioner who has the ability to attend one of these ceremonies and to see the, I can only say the light of hope in the eyes of these individuals as they have turned a corner, and they can see now that they are in a better place. However, it is also, you can see the realization that they understand that this is not a one-and-done thing, that this is going to be, for the rest of their lives, a struggle, but that they now feel the support and the love of those around them within the county, and certainly within the group that is surrounding them and supporting them. So, I guess I would say, as we remember D-Day, and as we contemplate those servicemen and women, it is, the scars are obvious when someone has a physical problem. They are not so obvious on the emotional, and we need to make sure that we are helping them to have the lives that they deserve, since their actions have given us what we enjoy today. So, with that, we are adjourned.